Okay.
Agenda.
Thank you very much. Okay, thanks for coming on, everybody. We'll start the meeting with the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start with the approval of your agenda. Any changes or corrections, Paul?
No.
Yeah?
I've not.
Right. About one change, I'd like to make F1 for Park Board Committee, the WPA pool in parks, and I'd like to move that up to right after the consent agenda, so Ms. Silling doesn't have to sit through the audit review if she doesn't want to. So with that change, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Make the motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Thanks, Paul. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. On to the consent agenda. Questions on the consent agenda? Comments? Okay. Entertained a motion to approve as presented.
I like the motion.
Thanks, Dan. A second?
Second.
Thanks, Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Thank you. And then we're going to take care of F1, the new business for the WPA pool in parks, which that is in your packet. That's the sign that's been designed. Jan, do you want to come up and talk about it at all? I think they've all got a copy of it in their packet, so.
Okay, it's just a sign our committee has researched, and it kind of tells you the history of the wall and everything, and, you know, how many, we found how many people had worked on it and all that, and so we just thought it'd be nice to have a sign up there to explain that it's a WPA wall and what WPA stands for, and, you know, the reason for the wall, too, so that's kind of what it is.
Okay. Yep. No, perfect. Appreciate it. Any questions, anybody? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I opposed. Motion carries. Six points. Okay, on to Visitors of Council, the 2022 Audit Presentation. Most exciting night of the year.
Did you go get your hard copies here?
Yes, we got the presentation, yeah.
Does everybody have one?
Yep.
I'm Kaylee Lentz from Smith Schaper. We'll start with the audit opinion. We issued an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion. That means we feel the financial statements are fairly stated, which is what we'd expect. There wasn't any issues with the audit. We went over the financial statements earlier in greater detail with Tim and Jess. And today I'm just going to present a summarized version here with the PowerPoint, but I did bring hard copies here if anybody does want to take a look at that information in greater detail.
And they've got it included in their packets as well, so they have it electronically as well.
Okay. Minnesota local compliance, we tested various areas like collateral held at the banks, bids throughout the year, and the letters that we send out to council members to disclose to us if they have any conflicts of interest. There were no exceptions noted. Management letter, we have two comments that we have each year due to limited personnel, segregation of duties, and the financial statement preparation that we help with. These aren't things that we expect to change, but we are still required to disclose these. Taxable tax capacity has increased over the last several years up to $5.6 million in Governmental fund revenues, general property taxes, levy $3.8 million, $3.28 million, and collected $3.86. General tax levy is 50% of your governmental revenues. Tax increment revenues collected $148,000 in 2022, just up slightly from the prior year. Local government aid, your LGA, at $1.2 million, hasn't changed quite a bit at all over the last several years, and it represents 16% of your total governmental revenues. Governmental fund revenues on the next slide, in the dark blue there, your general property tax are the most significant revenues coming in. You can see those have increased over the last several years. When you see the dark gray there in the LGA, that hasn't changed much, so those have had to increase to keep up. In the light blue there, your small amount there from tax increment. In the yellow, your charges for services, that's like your pool revenues, your ice arena fees, other park and rec fees that come in for your charges for services, and then the assessments there in the green. General governmental expenditures, just over $500,000, up $19,000 from last year, but still under budget about $24,000. Public safety expenditures, hasn't changed, been pretty steady over the last several years, totaling $1.6 million, up about $25,000 from 2021, and most of that increase is related to the police personnel service costs. And public safety is about 37% of your overall general fund expenditures in 2022. Public works, things like your streets, your sidewalks, street lighting, snow removal, overall $475,000 in 2022, down $73,000, related to not doing any sidewalk repairs this year and decreased costs for your street repair compared to last year. Culture and recreation expenditures in 2022 totaled $1.48 million, up $111,000 from last year. This increase is related to increased employee costs in the library, pool, and parks. If you can see in 2020, there was a jump, and that's when we were required to bring the ice arena on as a governmental fund of the cities instead of just holding it in a fiduciary capacity. Library, the library expenditures in 2022 totaled about $427,000. This does not include any capital outlay expenditures related to the building project costs that they had, but increased costs, about $33,000 related to employee costs in 2022. Next slide, your governmental fund expenditures. This does not include your capital outlay or debt service costs, but across the bottom there, the different categories, and each category, the light blue is your 2022 numbers. So general costs are staying right in that $500,000 range. Public safety, the most significant area of expenditures on, slight increase from last year for your police personnel costs. Public works can fluctuate depending, but this year was down a little bit for those sidewalk, no sidewalk repairs and no street repairs. Health and welfare, that spike in 2020, you had some restoration costs for your flooded property. Culture and rec, again, that 2020 amount jumped up from the ice arena, and some increased personnel costs in 2022. Cemetery, we brought on as a governmental fund, as a part of the general fund in the current year, and closed that out of the previously, it was enterprise fund. And then you just have some unallocated costs, and TIF economic development can fluctuate year to year. Your reserves, your general fund fund balance, unassigned fund balance in the general fund at $4.8 million, or, I'm sorry, $3.1 million, and then the lighter color there, your subsequent year's budgeted expenditures. So your policy is to keep that within about 40 to 60% of your next year's budgeted expenditures. So in 2022, you're about at 65%, just a little bit above that policy. Library fund fund balance, down to $77,000 this year. We used our reserves to pay for the building project. EDA fund balance, about $121,000. Your EDA is supported through your annual property tax levy. The decrease there is transferring out $75,000 to the EDA loan revolving loan fund. EDA Financial Assistance Fund, staying right about the $235,000 there. This fund is administered by an outside entity.
So that's, when you get those SEMCAC reports, that's what that is. So it's state MIF money that the city decided to transfer to SEMCAC to do housing projects. So we get those periodically in our account, like basically once a month.
The EDA revolving loan fund, this is where that EDA fund transferred that $75,000 income, bringing this fund balance up to about $155,000 in 2022.
I think part of that was because we wanted to have a little bit greater flexibility to do some larger loans. Part of that would also be kind of that funds our facade grant program, and that's, you know, not money that we're going to get back. So, I mean, it's one of those things where we felt like it needed to be in that fund as opposed to, especially with the construction project this year, we knew there might be a little bit greater demand, so.
Your debt service fund here, the next slide, you issued a file right there. You issued a 2022 A bond this year for about $6 million, and we paid off the 2012 A bond as well. Overall total bonds at about $16.9 million at the end of the year. Net pension liability at $4.6 million this year. This is actually determined by PARA. They give us the information, and we just make the adjustments, but you can see it can fluctuate year to year based on their assumptions, and they did change their assumptions and their discount rate and, you know, how the market performed. So that's why it did, this is the unfunded portion, the city's portion of their underfunding.
So what accounts for that big spike, then? Is that just because of the actuarial tables, or maybe that for council a little bit?
When they changed their assumptions, so whatever percent that they're estimating that they're going to earn on their investments, so they did change that percentage, it can cause a big spike, and also the market performance was a big indicator of why.
Market's down, so our liability's gone up.
Exactly.
Okay.
Net pension asset, the next slide, this is strictly the fire relief, and they are overfunded, so they have enough investments to cover what they are owed out. Capital project reserve stabilization fund at $1.4 million. This increase this year related to the general fund transferring in about $662,000, which was more than the actual capital outlay expenditures that were used towards that library project, the building project this year. Your utility funds, water funds, in that purple there, that's your operating revenue, and at about $948,000, those are covering both the dark blue, which is your operating expenses, and the lighter blue is your depreciation. So water fund operating is surplus, covering all expenses, including depreciation, so rates are sufficient to cover both of those for your future.
Well, prior to that, when you look through the audits, you'll see there was a big transfer into water, otherwise it would have been short this year. A lot of that has to do with our debt service. We issued it for the water tower, right? But then we had $500,000 we took from the ARPA funding that went directly towards that project. So otherwise, you would have seen a little bit more of an imbalance.
Water fund to balance sheet there, your cash and investments in the brighter blue at $1.7 million, and your bonds payable up to $4.1 million related to the water's portion of the bond for the Highway 57 and the water tower projects this year. Waste water fund, again, in the purple there, the $2.2 million operating revenues, covering your operating expenses and your depreciation of $596,000. Waste water fund balance, or balance sheet, the cash and investments at $3.2 million, and bonds payable up to $4.3 million. Again, their portion of the bond that was issued this year caused that to increase. Electric fund, the operating revenues at $4.6 million, again, covering the operating costs as well as the depreciation. You can see the dark blue there increased from last year. Your power purchase contract increased about $584,000 from the prior year.
A lot of that is that capacity charge that council talked about last year. We knew that that would be part of it, and another part of it is that we made that big transfer to cover the towers that were moved by Excel. So we know that through our MSA dollars this year, Brandon's confident that we can recoup some of those costs, so that'll be a positive for the electric fund in 2023.
Electric fund, the cash balance, $5.3 million in 2022. Stormwater fund, operating revenues at about $502,000 there in the current year, covering the operating expenses and depreciation. You see last year that it didn't quite cover, but we had those significant costs for the sump pump, sanitary sewer inflow infiltration project, that those weren't capitalized, so they were, you know, as part of your operating expenses that it didn't quite cover. Cash balance in the stormwater fund, $686,000, so we're able to increase cash reserves this year. Liquor fund, operating revenues, $364,000, covering your operating expenses and just slight depreciation, you can barely even see that little mark there, but they continue to transfer $16,000 out to the general fund from the last several years. Liquor fund cash balance, just over $1 million in 2022. And summarize, the general fund reserve increased $192,000 up to $3.2 million on assigned fund balance, 65% of the subsequent year's budgeted expenditures of the general fund. All your payments are being made timely on your debt. Ongoing capital projects, you have several, Highway 57, Safe Roots to School, 16th Street project, water tower, liquor store remodel, public safety building project, and the Vale project, property project, those are all ongoing as of the end of 2022. Capital improvement reserves at $1.4 million, and a current water and wastewater rates covering your operating costs and as well as increasing your cash reserves. And electric cash reserves at $5.3 million, down $387,000 from last year, but they spent approximately a half million dollars towards the 16th Street project. And liquor store continue to show consistent operating results, increase in its cash reserves to $1 million. Does anybody have any questions?
I do not. Ryan, anything?
I'm good right now.
Dan? Paul, anything?
Let's make a comment here, and some of these very early ones, it'd be kind of nice to see these numbers in a per capita as well.
Okay.
Because I assume our population's been growing, because I'm looking at the levy collections, just going up and up and up.
Right.
And actually see a per capita to see if it's going up or down, right?
Okay.
Because that kind of tells us what our taxes are actually affecting the people living here.
Yep, we can do that.
Anything else? Nope.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate all the work on the audit this year, Tim and Jess. Great working with you.
Oh, come on, you can't let her off that easy. We got to wade through the audit itself. There's like 129 pages.
I've already read those.
Oh, all right. No, I will note that in your financials, so you do have a copy of the audit there. If there are any questions that you do have, one of the most interesting sheets to me, I like to see in there is actually kind of a estimated budget to actuals, you know, because, you know, there are a lot of sheets in here with pension liability and stuff like that, that there isn't a lot we can do about. But, you know, it's always interesting for me to compare like how we did on a year-to-year basis, so that's kind of an neat thing. The other thing that's in your packet, thank you, that's in your packet tonight is the ice arena report. So we did go through that. We just had the ice arena board meeting this afternoon. So Howie, our manager there, and myself, and then the representatives from county went through that, and there was a small loss this year. There was about $8,000 loss this year at the ice arena. The way it works is that we split those losses with the county. So the city contributed about $4200, and the county contributed about $4200 to cover those losses. So, and since I've been here, that's not been unusual, and the mayor can attest to that, too, you know, his experience being on the board. We've had one year, I think, where we had a net gain. I think last year we had a positive, because we had a little bit, the cash flows kind of came in bunchy because they had a COVID time that was put into the next following year. So we had one really bad year, and then we had a year where we made a little bit of money. This year, we were a little short, but that's, just so you know, that's in there as well.
So that's been pretty consistent through history? It just, ice arena just loses a little bit of money every year?
You know, outside of, operations have been very consistent. Usually, there's a small loss in operations. Where we run into issues sometimes is on the capital expense. So like, we may have a year where, like last year, we pretty much broke even. If we hadn't had capital expenses, we would have been a little bit ahead, but they ended up replacing, I think, Howie said it was like a pump system and some kind of compressor or something like that. So in December, they ended up having $20,000 of capital that they spent. Otherwise, we would have had a small profit. So, yeah, I mean, it has been typical. I know that we, as a board, have talked about it before. My concerns about the long-term, you know, life expectancy of the ice arena, I know we talked about it today again at the board meeting, you know, that building was built in 1996, you know, it's at the, getting close to that 30-year mark, and that's when you start to see those really big capital expenses, you know, new roof, structural issues, anything kind of like that. And that's where, you know, eventually the council may have to make some choices about the long, you know, long span of that kind of a building. So just a heads up on that, too. So, otherwise, thanks very much, Kaylee.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was going to grill her, but she's getting off scot-free tonight. Good for her. She's passed the talker.
She talks like I do.
But if you do have other questions, please, you know, Jessica and myself, there was a lot of time that went into the 15-minute presentation that she just made, and there are a lot of, I mean, it's a lot of good information. You know, we know that some of the things, for example, she mentioned, you know, sidewalk work. That's something to keep in mind, you know, we didn't do a sidewalk project last year because for $50,000, we can't even get a vendor to come and put a bid in. So the goal with that is, and a lot of our things, is to, we save money in the general fund, where it builds that balance up, but it's intended to be part of a bigger project. A good example would be, we just met today with Tyler Software, which is a possible software replacement company. We know that's going to cost about $120,000 to the general fund. So we've been saving for the last three years. Well, that sits in the general fund even though it's going to be spent. So sometimes those numbers, you know, you can play with them a little bit, and there's a little given to them. So we're glad to answer any questions anybody has, though. Everybody did get the full copy, right? To look through. Everybody should have, well, and that box up there has the full copies, too, I believe, right? So if you want a paper copy, it's right there, and then you do have electronically, you've got the financial statements, too, so.
And if you want the ice arena one, there's an additional one in there.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions, discussion? On to, gee, old business, Fire Hall bids recommendation. All right, included in your packet, you've got a couple of different documents, and we've got a representative from ICS who will grill. Please, you've got to grill them. I mean, I bring these people here, I want you to ask questions. But it was very interesting. We sat through probably the best-attended meeting I've ever seen in a bid opening. Usually, you've got like two bidders, and that's it. There was, this room is entirely full, there was probably 75 people coming and going, because it was broken up into 11 parts. And so you see that in your packet, you've got the recommendation packet that ICS put together, and some of the components, some of the parts only had two bidders, but, you know, this is 382 pages long. Some of them had eight bidders, which was like the max number. So it was fascinating, you know, there's two overhead door companies, and there was eight concrete people or something like that. So you could see all the information there, and then you've got a recommendation letter from ICS breaking it down, what their recommendations are. So I don't know, if you want to talk about it a little bit, Taylor? You're welcome to come up here, you can talk from back there, too. Maybe just about the process and how you feel it went.
Sure. I don't know what questions you might have. As Tim said, we did the public bid opening. We grouped the project into 11 work scopes, so that's how you see it. So each work scope had different bidders who covered certain portions of the work. Once we received all the bids, you know, we qualify them all, so Tim was part of a short conversation where we just, we seen one bid that looked off, so we end up giving him a call, say, hey, we noticed that your bid is, you know, something that doesn't look right with your bid, and it was, in fact, an incomplete bid based on our conversation, so that's why we included the letter from, I think it was Queen City. You know, once we've got all the bids qualified, you know, then we scan everything in, store it, write the recommendation letter, which details each work scope, what their base bid was, what their alternate pricing bids were, and summarize all that. As discussed, I don't think we're going to move forward with the alternates just based on budget. Not sure what other.
Right, so that was our process for that. I mean, I guess I want you to know, like, we're trying to be very transparent. So like, all this is put out there because we want, you know, we want everybody comfortable with it, because there's a lot of money. The next thing we did was, Joe and I sat down and we talked with them electronically through some value engineering items, and we've included those in your packet, too. So basically, you know, what value engineering means to me is that things we can cut without affecting the performance of the building. We want it to still be a good, high-quality building, and so you've got a listing of those initial ones that, when the fire chief and I went through, we kind of found. So you can kind of see some of the changes there, and based on the conversations, there's a couple categories in there. Let's see, category eight, category nine, 13, 14, and then several of the ones towards the end. We hadn't gotten the value engineer reduction potential price for those, so, but it's a, we'd estimate, you know, around $100,000 probably that we may be able to have some savings, maybe a little bit more than that. I don't know if you've got any updates, Taylor?
There's a long way to, as we started really getting things, and...
Sure, so we, you know, so they'll continue to be doing a little bit of that, hopefully get some things that we can reduce the total cost a little bit down. So we've got that in the packet, and then we've got that overall budget for you. So as you can see there, it's a pretty substantial amount of money. The initial budget had a $6.968 million budget, and the number that it's at right now is 7.916, so it's about a little less than $1 million, you know, $950,000 higher than, you know, when it was originally set up. And I don't know if that was 2021, early '21, or '22 at some point in time. So we do think that, you know, I know that ICS's recommendation is to move forward with it. They feel the project isn't going to get any cheaper, and I think that's probably accurate. I know we've looked at options. There are some ways we can reduce the total cost. The amount that was authorized by the public was 7 million, and I think that utilizing some of the funds that we have on hand and some of the funds that have already been allocated, for example, natural gas franchise fees over the last two years have been allocated. We do have some levy dollars that can go towards it this year. We won't be borrowing any more than 7 million, so we still feel like we'll be in accordance with what the public had authorized. So I'm comfortable recommending moving forward, and then we would be asking you for approval tonight to give that authorization to ICS, and then we would be looking to work with David Drowan and Mike Bubani to authorize that, you know, we move forward with the bonding issuance this year for $7 million. So that's my recommendation. I think that's ICS's recommendation, Taylor, if you've got anything else you want to add before they have their conversations.
Yeah, I mean, you touched on the VE.
Sure, if you want to, go ahead. I kind of glossed over it.
Not sure if you touched on the tax rebate piece.
Yeah, that's one way, you know, we do think, so there is a, this year, the state's got legislation that'll allow us to a little bit more easily recoup the sales tax for construction for public buildings. So we anticipate there may be between $250,000 and $300,000 of savings there. It's not on labor expense, but it'd be on materials, for example. So that'll reduce the number down. I don't know exactly what that'll be. Like I said, based on the best knowledge I have, I think we can afford to do the project in the parameters that the council has laid out and the public approved. So that sales tax reduction isn't included in here? No, it's not included in the 7.9. So, yeah, so I mean, if we have 7.9, and we're coming, you know, we're bringing down by, say, $300,000 for that, the value engineering is another $100,000, so we'd be looking at sourcing, you know, $400,000 to $500,000 of funds on hand. Now, stabilization fund could be used for some of that, I mean, that's part of the reason it exists, is for, we used it for the library last year. That's part of the reason we've kind of saved towards it. And then, as I said, there are other funds we could utilize, you know, some of the funds, making some contributions from some of the utility funds, that sort of thing is possible as well. Okay. Open it up for discussion.
So I'm looking at the overall project summary here, just to make sure I'm understanding what I'm seeing. This adjustments column, at the top, it looks like you've got that 6.9 you said was our original budget, and I see $570,000 additional funding needed, so that's, I assume, the total of all the bids added on to the 6.9. What's the tax credits?
So I, at least, first, that would be our sales tax reimbursements, potentially, from the state of Minnesota.
So that's money that we have to, it's showing a positive value there, so I guess I'm just confused in whether it's getting...
I think the intention there was for them to equal the funds out, to equal the cost out, and they're, what they're looking at as source of funds. So a source of funds, that 6.9 would be our capital funding, so it would be our bond issuance, and then you have additional funding needed, which I just kind of discussed, you know, some of the locally sourced funds. We anticipate certain amount of rebates for energy efficiency and things like that.
Okay, okay.
And then we'd be getting those tax credits rebated to, or the tax, the sales taxes rebated to us, too.
Yeah, okay, so we've got 7 million there, original, $573 is the overestimate price, $350,000 is the estimated sales tax that we would have to pay and then get it returned to us.
That's right, exactly.
Gotcha, okay. And then sliding down towards the bottom, I see $408,900 is this stuff that we were planning to buy that we decided to cut?
That's right.
Okay.
Some of it was stuff that originally was in the original budget, and some of those items are going to be moved over from the fire hall that are there, for example, the, some of the FFE and stuff like that, and some of those other items may be added over time. For example, we may implement the fire station security system over time. I mean, it's not something that was necessary to build the building.
Yep.
You know, it's something we'd like to have, you know, it's a similar system with what they have over at the police station.
Okay.
But we may be able to utilize some of the fire department's actual operations budget to pay for part of that, and it may not happen all in, I mean, with the construction of the building. It's very likely that we'll, it'd be set so that it can be built, you know, added on quite easily.
Yep, okay. And then I see at the very bottom, 300,000 of contingency.
And that's another item, and Taylor can speak to that. I mean, I think most projects typically that we build, whether it's a street project or a building project, have a certain amount of contingency. In this case, it looks like it's around, you know, a little 5% or so. Taylor, can you speak to that?
It could be 5%, yeah.
That's what it looks like, yeah.
Yeah. And I mean, it's possible that that may also be a reduction on the total cost if we reduce all the contingency.
Yeah, so I'm looking at the bottom right number. So assuming there's no contingency needed, that's, that would be the actual cost before this 350,000 tax credit, which means we'd almost be right, very near the 7 million dollars after tax credits, assuming no contingency, right?
Yeah, if you take, if you take the, yeah, no contingency and then you take tax credits and the rebates out there, you know, you could be close to that.
So I guess the question is, is through history of doing these projects, how often do we not use any contingency?
I would say 0% of the time. We're always going to use some of the contingency.
Correct, yep. And I would say 5% is a conservative number that you'd use on a new project. And you hope to have some left over at the end of the day.
That's right.
Okay, so we're pretty confident the tax credits we're going to get back?
Very confident.
So...
But even if we don't get any of the tax credits back, when I've broken it down, I still feel we can locally source that funding if we need to.
Okay.
Without impacting the tax rolls or the levy dramatically.
So we're looking at about a quarter million dollars over budget, it looks like then. Spending a little contingency, getting the tax credits, that doesn't seem terrible.
Right.
And how much of the funding, you said, natural gas? We have funding already set aside for this?
192,000 dollars saved up right now in the natural gas that's been set aside since we started collecting.
Specifically for this project?
And then in the calendar year, last year, we had 108,000 of earnings in that fund. So we're anticipating it to be similar to this year, you know, we'll see some additional homes and usage varies, but let's say it's another 108 and 23. So that'll put us right about 300,000. I'm going to write this out, because I've done this before a couple times. That's right. I have it all added up together already. We're going to be capitalizing the interest in the first year of the bond issuance. So what that means is that when we borrow, the first year will be interest only. So in 2024, it'll be an interest-only payment, we're going to capitalize that. So it'll be part of the bond issuance. So we won't actually have any cash going out that way. So we won't actually have this, fully hit the books until the 2025 tax levy, which means that what we can do is we can moderate the increases. I mean, we already levied a certain amount last year to get a start.
Have we already?
What we don't want to do is go from 0 to 60, I mean, in this case, 0 to 500,000 in one year. That's just a huge hit too.
Yep.
I mean, it hamstrings the council.
Cash flow, yeah.
But if we ramp that up slowly, we have some reserve funds available, as I mentioned, in stabilization. For example, if we wanted to, I mean, we transferred almost 300,000 dollars for the library project last year. If we did a similar amount now, I mean, that's basically it. You know, and if we don't want to do that, I do think that we will have a little bit of a reserve balance in the liquor fund after they're done with their remodel. I know the mayor and I have talked about, that's a possibility, where we'd leave them enough to do their operations and things like that, but then we would maybe take 50 to 100,000 dollars and put it towards the project. And there are other funds too. One thing that we haven't looked at, and I've thought about it, and I know Jessica and I have talked about it a little bit, once the firehouse demoed, some of their operational costs, which we budgeted for, for the remainder of the year, you know, they won't have those. You know, they won't have, you know, the insurance costs, they won't have some of the, you know, the building maintenance costs. So there was a possibility you'll see some cash that might be available to transfer in. And maybe that'd be something we'd use to help with their furniture, equipment, technology also to kind of round that out. But, I mean, overall, I'm comfortable saying, I think, I think the project can move forward without impacting any of the plans that we have.
Have we received any of the funds from the fire levy that was approved yet?
What do you mean?
Well, part of our, we had to vote, right?
Sure. 263,000 is the amount the council opted to levy for that this year.
Yeah.
So there isn't, it isn't a separate fire levy in this case. It's, it's a little bit different from like a school levy, where when they do a referendum, it's lined out on your tax statement. Here, the council increased levy by 263,000 in the first year, and we'll build that fund up to, to help pay for things moving forward. So like I said, we didn't want to go from 0 to 400,000 in one year.
Right. I'm just curious whether that levy's been due and we received that money?
We will get the first half of those taxes in June, and the second half will come in December, just with our regular...
Which would be before we'd need it?
Right, well, which, exactly. So that money could also be possibly used for helping Memorialist the first payment.
Yep, alright.
A good question. I really appreciate it, because I had to work through it myself and kind of figure out. But I, I mean, as I said, I think, I mean, if it would have come in a lot higher, I mean, we would have said no. You know, I mean, it just, it wouldn't be feasible. But I do think, the other thing is council should keep in mind, and it's an important thing to think about, it's a big project, it was approved by the public. It is going to mean that we probably don't have the funds to maybe do some other big projects for a little while. You know, we're going to have to wait a couple of years until our debt service comes down before, I mean, doing what we're doing this year with the reclaim and pave project, I mean, those sort of street projects, I want to try and continue those. We don't want to let the streets go. But doing a project like 57, eh, isn't going to happen for a while. So I mean, it is a big commitment to, to this, this amount of debt service, so.
Anybody else? Brian, anything?
Just in looking, I really appreciate that, that you and Joe looked at what areas you could cut a little bit from. I think that, that showed that, that was a proactive thought to try to help bring this down a little bit, so that was nice to see. I just, I definitely feel like this is a definite need for our fire hall, our fire community, our citizens, it's just something we need to do.
Okay.
600 to 700 calls a year, that's a lot of medicals, a lot of, not as many fire, but still, they're there as well, so it's, it's a need.
Dan, anything?
What we're cutting, that's not going to affect anything far as...
Joe, you want, we can run through those if you want.
I just want to make sure we're not cutting something that we need down the order.
I think that'd be a good idea. If you don't mind, we'll go through those, those value engineering items. So you've got those in your packet there. The first one was eliminating an overhang detail on the north side of the building between grids three and five. And maybe, Taylor, yeah, Taylor can talk to those a little bit. I know, you know, there's some that Joe and I talked about, just making sure that we're comfortable with them, but we were. Maybe Taylor, you can help explain kind of to Dan's point.
Yeah, number one, there's, basically, it's tough to explain without the plan, but on the north side of the building, there's an exit, there's a vestibule and an exit. When you walk out of the vestibule to the west, you'd walk out over like a, kind of a covered entrance, but it was just the footprint of the building.
He's been carrying around those for, you know, the last 18 months, so he is ready to go, no.
Just trying to clean up the council chambers of all...
There you go. I appreciate it.
So this is the area he's talking about.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I believe, you know, we're kind of setting up for future vertical expansion too, if and when that time comes. So we carry that roof line straight across that, you can see the building foundation actually kind of jogs in at that point.
Mm-hmm.
So this VE item is just to have the whole building kind of follow that footing line and not have that overhang over the top. Shouldn't really affect any operations for the look of the building whatsoever. You can still recapture that additional square footage if and when future vertical expansion happens. Number two, delete topping slab over the 10-inch planks for future second level footprint. So typically, when you have a precast building, you'll have precast planks that create the roof structure. And so if and when you decide to build on the second level, you'll likely be adding a topping slab over those precast planks. The topping slab isn't required for any sort of structural or to support any mechanical units on the roof. And so this VE item would eliminate that topping slab and you just re-roof, or just roof right over the, the precast planks. You can see, number three was just something we were spitballing, but that had already been accounted for by the precast supplier. Number four, just changing out some flooring finishes in the commons area. So when you walk in, the west entrance, we're calling that gathering space the commons. We originally had like a, they call it luxury vinyl tile, LVT. And so we provided an option to not go down with that floor and just go in with sealed concrete, which is also present throughout the building in a lot of areas.
I like the, I like the concrete. And if you go, I mean, if you go to one of these stores, like, you go to Home Depot or something like that, or one of those big stores, you'll see that. Or if you go to a lot of industrial buildings nowadays, it's all, you know, sealed concrete.
So in the community room, this is, this credit's pretty small, but there's some architectural cloud, gypsum board cloud features. It's just a acoustics type, something, because you've got a higher ceiling in there, there's probably going to be a lot of people in there at times. So they get creative with the ceilings in there. And so base bid was to have an actual metal stud framing with drywall around it. They do make systems that are like the acoustical ceilings, where you just have a, basically a metal, break metal edge around it with ceiling tiles dropped in. Serves the same purpose, probably be even better acoustically than the gypsum board. Number five, so we had window lights in all of the overhead doors. With the south elevation of the building being the more, I'll say, the presentation side or that seats the most from the public, we'll keep the windows in the, in the south side, but go to just a standard overhead door with no window lights on the north side. There's some other items related to the overhead doors. So in our specifications, we had just some visual indicators that will, not say provide direction, but just a, like, a visual indicator to let whomever's driving or exiting the building know that it's clear, or that the door's all the way open. As is typical with overhead doors in, or garage doors in your home, you've got kind of the safety sensors on each side. So I think our specifications had maybe something a little bit more robust that maybe, and I don't know the specifics exactly on it, I didn't dig into it too much. But I think what we had specified was maybe a little bit more robust than just what you'd see in a home. I think there's other options more similar to, but still a commercial application for those safety sensors that we'd be proposing to maybe move towards. Couple other line items that we're still tracking down costs on, so I forget if it was, it was in the landscaping ordinance that any trash dumpster bins must be enclosed in a system that is visually appealing and somewhat matches the building. So what we had specified was a TREC system enclosure, so it'd be a three-sided enclosure right up against the building that uses like a TREC deck system, that composite finish, composite board finish. The VE item would be to look more towards a chain link fence enclosure, which would still conceal the trash bins, but would maybe be a little bit cheaper of an option. Number 10, so reduce ballards at self overhead doors. So we've got those steel ballers on each side of each overhead door, on both sides of the building. And we had proposed, if most of the truck traffic is coming in from the north, we reduce the number of ballers on the south side. I think we discussed, we'd still maintain the ballers at the smaller overhead doors for the smaller light duty pickups or SUVs. But if we don't have the big trucks coming in from the south side, we wouldn't protect those, those building edges from, from trucks with ballers heavy, or the heavy duty steel ballers that we have. So on the south side of the building again, where the trucks are exiting, in our current plans, we have concrete from the building down to the road. The VE option would be to go in with a heavy duty asphalt from the building to the sidewalk before the curb. So another one here, number 12, so just revise, reduce plumbing, piping and fixtures in the apparatus bay. So this is something that Joe and I discussed as options, and it's, I think we went pretty heavy on some of the, I'll say, hydrants, compressed air drops and hot and cold water. We had essentially water faucets in various locations in the apparatus bay for hooking up hoses, hooking up compressed air lines and the bigger, the hydrants would be truck fill, right, or?
Yeah, some of the overhead fill as well.
Yes.
Was some of the things that we had just eliminated and moved some of that stuff around, so it's, it'd be, we still have it, but it's not, it's not quite as many.
Say we probably cut that, we're looking at like maybe four different things. We're looking at overhead truck fill. We used to have two branch lines with drops in each bay. We went from essentially two drops in each bay to one drop in each bay. We still left one hydrant on each side, north and south. We left one hose bib or water faucet connections on each side. We eliminated the hot water at those, so they'll be cold water only. But I still feel like, or I think we are in agreement that it's probably still pretty adequate for what's needed. Still waiting on some feedback, so along with the apparatus bay, that's the pre-engineered metal building portion. So the PEMB, with the exterior panels exposed fasteners. So there's a lot of different exterior panel systems. We had a little bit more of a higher grade one with the concealed fasteners. We're looking to maybe VE towards exposed fasteners. On the exterior of the building with these exterior panels, we had it set up so that five feet up was a Wayne Scott, still metal panel, but still, the thought with that was, is if the building ever did get ran into, or if something hit the, you know, lower portion of the building, you don't have to replace, you know, a five-foot section instead of, you know, the full height panel on the exterior. Interior liner panels, so if you're looking at the interior walls, we had, I don't know what the exact material it is, it's either fiberglass, like a fiberglass panel or a metal panel, but that was full height all the way up to the roof deck. We're talking about reducing that down, so you'd have panels up to eight feet, and then you'd see insulation and like the steel framing for the building up above that eight feet. One other option we're taking around, so right now you have, in the apparatus bay, you've got clear span, roof joists or trusses. And there may be an option for cost savings if we added a column at the midspan, so you'd have a set of columns supporting each truss that runs north to south. Another one with the pre-engineered metal building, we're being told that there's some cost savings if you reduce the roof pitch. The pre-engineered metal building has even basically overhangs that extend out from the lower walls just to provide a little extra coverage. We can kind of shrink those down a little bit. There would still be overhangs, just maybe not quite as pronounced. Then the last one is to delete a roof drain above the mechanical room. And so that mechanical room is housed within the footprint of the storm shelter component. And so anytime you have mechanical penetrations going through those storm shelter walls, it comes with some added components that protect that penetration from the, you know, the storms or high winds or debris that would be flying. So every penetration has a shroud that gets attached to the building so that, you know, you have piping come up, it'll penetrate through the wall, but then there's a shroud that sits in front of it that basically, if that pipe gets blown off the wall, you've still got that opening protected. And so we tried during design to minimize the amount of penetrations, and this was one that came up after the fact, is if we eliminate this roof drain, we could reduce one penetration and we would reroute that, that storm water off the roof through a downspout in another location. I know it's kind of hard to visualize some of these, but...
Well, I think that's a good breakdown.
Yeah, thank you, Dan.
Is your question?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we weren't deleting something that we shouldn't be.
Anything else, Dan?
Well, that's all I got.
Thank you, thank you for coming too. So I think we've got it pretty much dialed as far as the, the funds above the borrowing, so with that, any, excuse me, any other discussion? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Thanks, Ryan. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, and then what's the, now that we've done that, what's the timeline?
So after this approval, then we'll start writing out contracts for the 11 work scopes. I would think that we could have those put together maybe by the end of the week, early next week, and start circulating those around for signatures. And then next step would be to get material submittals going, so they can start identifying everything that they need, start getting everything... they need, start getting everything submitted and reviewed and approved, and start getting materials ordered, focusing on the long lead items like the precast, mechanical equipment, and steel.
So we're looking at a start time of...
I talked with Joel a little bit about that. I think you had mentioned early August you thought for demo.
August 2nd, I think is the...
That's the date we're planning for.
The target.
I think it's kind of hinging on getting access to the site. I know with the street project going on, there's some people camped out there, and ideally they're gone before we get going.
Okay, and I know Joel and I have also talked a little bit about the staging, so most of the equipment will probably be staged up at Public Works, so the larger equipment. Anticipate that the fire department will probably utilize City Hall here for a lot of their training space, just because they need a larger space for meetings and things like that. And then they'll be using the current ambulance garage for the placing of their emergency response vehicle, so for their medical calls, that's where they're planning staging out, right, Joe? Okay. Awesome.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Onto new business memo regarding complaint at 15 Seventh Street Northwest.
It's not really new business, but that's where it got put. This is something council members will recall from last year. We received a number of complaints regarding this property, so Ian asked me to share it with council. You can see the pictures there. The resident did come in, and I did speak with her, and she indicated she was going to be putting up some sheds, so I asked her to have that work done by May 9th, which is the day before our next council meeting, and I guess I'll be giving you an update, or Ian will be giving you an update if that isn't completed at that time. You know, as you recall, last year staff were directed to remove a lot of the acquired materials on the property, so just wanted to give you an update on that.
Thank you. Just had a quick question here.
Yeah.
The very last sentence written there says, "This property is an arrears on its tax payments."
That's correct.
Like a lot?
I believe it's $535, something like that.
So they're just one payment behind, or...
You know, it was a note from the newspaper, they publish all the arrears tax payments, so I don't know what component of her taxes that includes.
Okay. Yeah, well, do we even get that from the county on a property by property basis?
No.
We don't, yeah, we don't get a, I don't think so. Anything else?
And the two vehicles that were noted by the police department with expired tabs?
Are they expired now again?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
So you got them last year in June or July when they did the work?
Okay.
They're expired.
[laughing].
Anyway, something to check on maybe, when you're not directing traffic at, you know, four-way stops that were temporarily...
In your spare time.
All right, thanks everybody. Administrator's report.
Sure, I've got a couple of items in there I'll run through, a couple of items we already talked about. So we've got park board updates, so we authorized that sign tonight, so that's good. They had a really good discussion, I think, presentation from Ms. Bailey regarding a handicap chair, chair swing, basically it would be a swing that someone could roll a handicap wheelchair onto, and then lock it into place and allow that person to swing. I think we're looking at possibly adding that to the parks, we'll see what the costs are. She had some estimates, I mean, I think Ben Langen is going to work on that a little bit, yeah.
If we did end up going with the ones that she had suggested, I don't know if those are commercial grade, park approved type swings, but we had looked into shipping, because if you buy one, it's $850 in shipping. They're three to $5,000 apiece, but if you ordered three of them, it's still 825 for all three shipping. So we had talked about working with a joint ventures or another group in the area to have purchase more than one, because then we would facilitate the school, Veterans Park and Lions Park.
And we do have a site at Veterans Park that would work pretty well. It's actually a vacancy where there's a swing missing right now, so it would be perfect. Plus, we would save the cost of the frame, because that is something we talked about at the meeting, was if there's a spot where we can put it in, where there's already a vacancy, the item she had included a separate frame. So, you know, I went over there and took a look at it, and I think for sure on that one, I think we have a possibility at Veterans already, so that'd be great. It also would not require us to pour as much concrete, or it wouldn't be as much work to get the handicap accessibility component of it done, so that would be a benefit to us as well. So just an update there, if you haven't had a chance to fill out that park survey and return it, that'd get us back to it. It did go out with utility bills, it's electronic as well, so folks can fill it electronically. We're hoping to get a good response. We actually have our job shadow kind of staff person, Ali, is presented at the park board, and he's going to be helping to collate those results and kind of get us some good information there. So there's also a vacancy on the park board, so if you know someone who's interested, let the mayor know. Mr. Petrie stepped down after a couple of years, he's got some work engagements and things like that he's got to be doing, so appreciate his service there, and you'll steal his letter later in the packet there. Our report went pretty well, I think overall, I mean, it's, a lot of stuff we knew was going to happen with the electric department, we knew capacity was up, we knew they had a big cost for the pole movement, so some of that may come back to us. Pensions, talked about that, the state's doing a lot of legislation stuff, a little later in your packet, I've got a legislative update, that was from the Coalition of Greater Minnesota City, so I kind of combined that down to a little bit more relevant information. Compass, updates there, and then the FEMA, FEMA map. So our role, based on what FEMA has told us, and I did attend a meeting up at the county, is folks who come to the city, we will refer them to FEMA, to the right people, and they'll, there isn't really a lot the city can do to change anything with FEMA's map. Their map's based off of information from 2008, which seems to be somewhat outdated, but that's the federal government, unfortunately, to a certain degree.
Better than the original from '82.
Yeah, it is 45 years later that they updated, so I mean, there's that, but 41 years later. Anyway, the appeal period will start later this fall, and then folks will have a chance to get in there. I've heard from a couple of homeowners, we advise them what they can do is get what's called a LOMA, which is a letter of exemption, basically, so what FEMA won't do is they won't change the map, if it's just one person requesting it. But if you go and you get the surveying done, and you get the engineer's letter, they will exempt your property, they'll give you this letter, and it'll be something you can put with your property, so you're not required to have the flood insurance done. So anyway, just a heads up on that, and then fire hall update there, and some loss control. So I've got some good loss control books for the staff to be doing as some homework, possibly, I'm sure Linda will love it. You know, it's called verbal judo, and it's techniques for de-escalation, so I think it'll be a positive for our staff at City Hall, so they're going to get to have their own. So, then as I said, going forward, you've got that legislative update, you've got some more information on FEMA, and that's their presentation, so we're a community consultation officer, so that was not a title that I asked for, but it was given to me by the federal government, so I'm lucky in that way, I guess. And then we do have a copy of the grant which we submitted, which I discussed at our last meeting a little bit about the power supply. So there's questions in there, if you have anything on that. That was submitted about two weeks ago on Friday to the federal government as well, so.
Okay. Any questions for Tim? Thanks, Tim.
You bet.
Engineers report, the MINDOT-CAS and Cooperative Construction Agreement, that's a boilerplate agreement we have with them on that, so any questions on that at all?
Just wanted to share that with you, so that, you know, you can see that everything's been encumbered with the roundabout up on 16th Street.
Perfect. Do you need action on that?
Oh, no need action, nope.
Okay, down to personnel, resignation of Police Officer David Coons, so...
I hope that we were not expecting, but he decided this career wasn't for him.
Yep, okay. Well, we'd like to thank Officer Coons for his service while he was here, and wish him the best in his future. I'll entertain a motion to accept his resignation.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Promotion of David Greenfield to circulation technician, grade six, step one, $22, $44 effective 5/1/23.
And this is to fill a vacancy of Kelly Bell, who's resigning at the end of the month in that role, and I know that Mel isn't here tonight to talk about it, but that was the recommendation from the library board to promote him to that role. And he does have a master's degree, he does fit the criteria for the position, so I know that the library board is comfortable with it, and I think after review, we were comfortable with it too.
Okay, all right. Any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Number three, job description for city clerk, K3.
So I think this is a follow-up item, I think Linda's just looking for some resolution one way or the other. Is that fair to say, Linda?
Yep, yep, whatever you decide to do, if you decide to accept it or not.
Okay, open that for discussion. Any comments, questions?
So I was going through the old and the new, and at one time, I thought you were saying it was going to go salary, but if you look at the top, it's called hourly, non-exempt, both of them, so that would not be a salary, correct?
That might be an oversight if we didn't have that changed.
Okay. So it was just, I wasn't sure, because, you know, and then I see it was going from pay grade of 10 to 13.
It would be an exempt, it was just with oversight.
Okay.
Yeah, so it would be a department head level position at that 13, that's where a lot of our department heads fall.
Where's that on? Would, original one was associate's degree, the new one is a bachelor's, does that have to be, would that have to change, is that a need?
Well, I think, you know, the consideration on that would be that since the position was created, and historically, the community's grown quite a bit, it entails a lot of different responsibilities, and the educational attainment levels that we're seeing for graduates is generally higher than it was historically.
Okay.
In Linda's case, she has an extreme amount of experience, which we wouldn't expect from a new applicant necessarily, so you'd be looking at a combination of education and experience. So I think that the council, if they had an applicant who was extremely qualified, even if they had an associate, that would be something the council could make a choice on at that time.
Because, you know, I just know that you were stating it's always hard to find replacements for any kind of job right now, and I just didn't know if that was detier people from even looking, but I know it did say with experience.
That's right.
So I did see that, I was just curious. And there was, in the new one, it was missing something from the old one, or was it? It doesn't, the new one doesn't have anything about administering payroll benefits and human resources that I saw, unless I missed it, but if that was something we were doing, and it's not in the new one, who would take that over? Kind of...
I think we can add that to the human resources support, or to the human resources section, because I don't think we planned on...
Well, I mean, that might be part of a realignment, too. You know, we've looked at realigning some of the other positions. A good example would be Jan's position. You know, right now, she doesn't really do what a deputy clerk does in a lot of communities. She does more of kind of an accounts payable clerk position, and so that is a good point, Dan, I appreciate that. And that may have been left out inadvertently, too, I don't know, Linda, if that was the intention originally, I don't recall when that came out of the job description, because I think that that's certainly something Linda does right now, and I don't think she's opposed to doing that, it's just a matter of, I know that when we've looked at it, we've looked at realigning a lot of the job descriptions at City Hall, simply because they're, to a certain degree, outmoded at this time.
Any help?
I think that's it.
Okay.
That, we're just thinking, see, I didn't have it last time, I wanted to go through it, so I was...
Nope, that's good. Did you get the answers, Your Honor?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? So it'll be going from an hourly position to a salary position, to eliminate the overtime and comp time stuff, right? Okay. And then as far as more supervisory duties?
You'd be adding the administrative assistant and the custodian.
Right.
I mean, I already have 30 election judges three times next year, and so it'd be those supervisors.
Are we, at the last meeting, the custodian was putting in a retirement.
And we haven't looked, we were still looking to see whether we wanted to do a service, or if we wanted to hire a person.
Right.
We were going to kind of compare what it costs and get some costs for a service.
Sorry, my computer's being really slow here. Okay, how's that fit with your organizational chart, then, that we just approved?
Well, I don't think it'd be a problem, I mean, it's just a matter of, you know, at Linda's experience level, there's probably other jobs that she should be doing, and I know in terms of the project management, that's something like, for example, with the remodel of the back office, the back building, part of the building here, you know, she coordinated that, and I think that that is something that she should and can't do. It's just a matter of, you know, what does council want to do? You know, I mean, it depends on, you know, and part of it is the personality and the job abilities of each person have to be evaluated individually. Some people are going to be better at certain things than others, and I don't think it would, it would impact in a negative way anything that we have on the job chart or the chain of command.
Just making sure we didn't need to update that also?
No, I don't think it would, I mean, you know, it certainly is up to the council, whatever they decide to do tonight.
Okay. Paul, anything?
I guess my only question is, as Tim, you're like CEO of City Hall, is this your recommendation that we go forward with this?
Yeah, I think so. You know, just studying it, and I mean, and part of it is Linda does have additional things she's going to have to take on, you know, I mean, and for her, at her point in her career, that's, she's like, it's a coin flip for her, too, and sometimes it's kind of easy to get into that role and say, hey, I've been doing this for a long time, it's easy to keep doing it, but I think her interest in growing her role is something where, you know, at a higher level, I feel more comfortable tasking her with more things. And she needs to then, I mean, for example, she's been working with the cemetery this year, which was previously a responsibility of the finance director position, which has not been the most fun for her, but I think she recognizes that as something that, you know, in order to get more money, you have to do more, and I think that's a fair correlation, really.
Okay. Okay. I did have one question, Linda, for you, just looking at the pay numbers, it looks like right now you're at 3563, is that right? So would it be, would it be possible to start you on step one on 13, then? Which is 3603?
You're at the top right now on grade 10, right?
I'm at, yeah.
How many, how many steps are in pay grade 13? Because each seven, each seven has seven?
Each one has seven.
Okay. I wasn't sure if they had different by...
But I had added the overtime in it.
Well, that's true.
So in my, I had added...
You're right, you're right, you're right.
No, I'm, that's why I'm asking, that's why I'm asking.
[laughing]. I remember seeing the numbers last week, but I don't remember, I don't have them here. Not last week, last time. Anything else? Anything, Ryan?
I think as we look towards the future, it might be good to have this as that salary position, because then all those job requirements are in there, we don't have to worry about someone saying, well, I don't want to put in the overtime and the extra time to do it, it's already part of that job description, and they have to do it.
Okay.
At the last meeting, you talked about clerk one and clerk two, is that something we're still looking at for, or does it need to be done? I mean, you have a deputy clerk, do you call, does she become clerk two instead of deputy clerk?
Well, that's a possibility. You know, we had talked a little bit about that last time, you're right, I mean, that could be something we could take a look at. I mean, like I said, it's just about, you know, making the person fit the right role, and saying what, you know, what are your responses going to be, you know? To me, a deputy clerk is someone who I would expect in most cities to be payroll. You know, it's not a, it's not something that, you know, especially once you know what you're doing, because everyone wants to get paid, so it can be a big mess, too. But, I mean, it's not something, it's a repetitive job, where it should be relatively straightforward for someone who could do, after three, four months of training, it should be almost an entry level position kind of a thing. Whereas, my expectation for a city clerk is that they're going to be, you know, it's going to be a department head, it's going to be someone who is managing certain components of the city, you know, in conjunction with, you know, the finance director, assistant city manager, I mean, that's, when I'm not here, I need someone to be, you know, doing long-term, and also be doing day-to-day operation kinds of things, and that's where you have to break it down, you know, and that's, that's kind of, I guess, the strength to it.
Okay. All right, so we'll get the changes made to the job description, the salary versus hourly, and then I would recommend that it would go to approve the request at grade 13, step three, 3841, that's consistent with where it is now with the overtime.
You're going to add in there the payroll for now until you...
Yeah, I think that's appropriate.
Yeah, I think that's appropriate, if you've got other projects, let me know, because Linda will be salaried, so she needs to have plenty of work to do.
(laughing) I just want to make sure everybody gets paid.
Yep. That's right.
Okay, so I'll make that motion to approve the new city clerk job description and move it to grade thirteen, step three. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thanks Ryan, any other discussion?
Actually, I do, and this goes, and I'm sorry, but this goes back to the original word, our depth perception, color perception, and you said that's in a lot of job descriptions?
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't pertain right now, but I'd like to look at that down the future, because I looked at it as a liability for the city, or if somebody gets hired and says they fit the bill, and then all of a sudden they get fired because they didn't get, have that, you know, it could be a lawsuit pending.
Okay.
I don't know, I could be wrong.
When they read the job descriptions, I think that was part of their process, and you were here when they did those.
Yes.
I'd be interested in why they normalized that and had it in.
And maybe it was just something and we overlooked them and...
Sounds like a good research project for the city clerk.
I just don't want, I just don't want down the road, all of a sudden we lay somebody off, fire somebody, and then they come back and say, well, I didn't have that, and you fired me because of it, you know, I want to make sure we're covered in every basis, and they're protected too, you know.
I know when we were looking at the library position and evaluating it, because Michelle did have a lot of changes that she made with that, that was something we talked about as well, so I think it's definitely worth looking at more.
And maybe it doesn't matter at all, but I just...
Yeah.
Just in case.
Thank you for making that note.
Okay, any other discussion?
I'm done now, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, alright. All in favor said aye.
There's no second.
Sorry, oh, I thought...
Oh, you didn't.
I did second.
Ryan seconded.
Then I checked it.
Okay, all in favor said aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Petrie resignation from the park board, we heard that, so he's got some other stuff going on, so thank him for his service in the park board for the last two and a half years, and wish him the best, and with that, entertain a motion to approve or to accept his resignation.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks Dan, all in favor said aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you, motion carries, updated library assistant job description?
That's just informational, I just wanted to get a copy in your hand, so you do know that this is a, the intention by the library director is to focus this position a little bit more on the youth and family component of the library.
Okay. Any questions from anybody at this time?
Depth perception thing in this one too.
(laughing) It's consistent with all of my...
I was just curious.
Okay, number, number seven, follow-up discussion on work from home topic, if anybody has anything. And I guess what we're really looking for, and I'll just say this, is we need some feedback from you on whether we want to pursue a policy, or if we're not interested in doing anything right now. I mean, that's kind of what we need as staff, because if there's, if there's interest in doing it, then we'll get to work and we can start formulating something to bring back to you, and if there's not, then we won't spend the time and energy on it. So I mean, that's, that's kind of what we're looking for really from council, is is it a possibility, is it an option, or is it not? And if it's not, then fine, if it is, then that's something we can get, there's lots of other policies that are available, we can kind of go through them and kind of bring those components back to council for review.
Okay.
I think it'd be fair to have you spend the time, have your team spend the time to look at it, just because then we can have it in front of us to decide, and if we say no right away, then we are doing it a service of our staff that maybe need that.
Anything else?
I think we need to look at it, I mean, into the future, I suspect there's going to be difficulty with retention otherwise, so we should probably think about it, get something in place proactively. I guess it might be a little bit reactively too, because it might be a little late on the ball by now, but...
Well, and just make sure we're looking at both aspects, you know, I see there's a lot of companies that are stating that people are coming back, federal government's stating that, you know, let's make sure we're not jumping the gun on it, and let's make sure we're looking at every aspect of it, make sure we're not just doing it.
Sure.
You know, and we'll do it right if we're going to do it.
Okay.
I'm going to be a real tough sell, so you better do a really good job.
(laughing) I think I burned my bridges on the fire hall, I bent over for you, so I, you know, I better be, anyway. No, well, that's a good direction, because yeah, we'll try and come up with something, I know the mayor's not going to be here at the next meeting, we may have a draft then, and I'll make sure you get that, and then hopefully, I'd like to have action, you know, on the twenty-sixth, I think it's the twenty-sixth of May, so that's our second meeting in May, when the full council's here, because I think it's important for us to have some resolution on it, one way or the other, because that's just, it's good for staff to know, you know, what the future will hold a little bit more.
Twenty-fourth.
Yeah, if you get it, then you get it to me, I can...
Yeah, absolutely, we'll definitely get you, we'll get you maybe a couple.
Yeah, thanks.
For your reading when you're, you know, on your drive.
I might be able to call in.
Audio book or something, you know.
Okay.
You gotta, you gotta read it to us, Tim.
Okay, I have, they always said I had a face for radio, so I mean, that was good, I don't know.
They weren't wrong.
Ah.
Attorneys report, anything?
Anything from you, you want to second that?
Okay.
(laughing) Good attorney, come on.
He's quiet.
Correspondents, congratulations to the wastewater treatment plant for their certificate accommodation, that come from the state?
It does, yeah, it does from the PCA.
They're doing a good job up there, we appreciate that. Anything else, any other questions or comments on correspondence?
Just on the playground one, talked to Sarah, there were, some of the families asked if they should come tonight or not, I said, I don't think we're going to have much decision on anything tonight, but it is something, we have a lot of families that I think would really benefit from it. There's not one within a thirty, forty mile radius, I think they talked about Red Wing and Winona maybe having one, so it would be, it'd be something that would bring families in from other communities too, to have one at some of our parks, these swings, I think would be a great idea, and trying to find some sources of revenue, Dean Nelson came in from the, if you've read, and said that they would like to take the fees from softball and give some of those that usually go to our festival in the park to projects like that, so that would help a little bit. It's costly, but it's, it's something that's a great idea, and Chris Petrie before he did say he was, took his resignation, said he would talk to some different agencies in Rochester and around the community to see what kind of grants are available, he's got some connections and ties with some of those from previous roles he's had, so.
We just gotta, I'm sorry, we just kind of make sure, if we go forward with this, we do it right.
Yeah.
Obviously, but then we also have to hopefully count on the rest of the people to use some common sense and decency, not to be playing with it and damaging it, you know.
Yeah.
And that is a concern.
And that's my biggest concern, yeah.